All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our 6:00 PM Special City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 25th, and our topic tonight is our capital investment strategy. We will start off with a quick roll call, roll call, and then we'll go to agenda approval. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember, I almost said Councilmember Dean. Councilmember Dunn.
All good. Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All present and accounted for. We have an agenda approval.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. All those in favor of approving the agenda as printed, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. So we are up to citizen comments. So we do have a citizen comment period only at the beginning of this meeting tonight. So if there's anyone in chambers who'd like to make a comment, please go ahead and fill out the yellow sheet at the next to the door. If there's anybody online who'd like to make a citizen comment, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature and we will call on you. Uh oh. Amber alert. Okay, um, so I don't see anybody here. Do we have anybody online? Nope. Okay. All right. So we will go right on to reports and inquiries. So first we have the city, well, only we have the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to update the council on a couple of things. Back on February the 4th, the council adopted a resolution to adopt an updated commute trip reduction plan. This is a, um, this is something that comes out of Spokane County and it's implemented through an organization called Commute Smart Northwest. And so we've been a partner with this as long as he has been incorporated. And it's with great deal of pleasure that I bring to you and announce Kate Garcia with or employee transportation. City of Liberty was honored this afternoon in that ceremony of the Commute Smart Northwest organization as the champion ETC for the first quarter. And this not only is in recognition of her efforts to gain participation within the city of Liberty Lake among its staff, but also her own contribution to the program by participating herself. And so it was pointed out during the ceremony that she took over this role in 2021. And since 2021, between 2021 and the end of the first quarter, our participation has grown 20-fold. And so that is a testament to her dedication and effort as coordinator of this program. And I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that she was recognized and we're glad to have her on our team.
Great. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very cool.
And then the second thing, I just wanted to remind everyone if questions arise. As you're out and about.
Mark, your microphone's kind of going in and out. I don't know if it's, if you're not close enough or what.
There may be a battery issue.
So the second thing that I wanted to remind you all of, as you're out and about, between now and Monday, the 31st, binding down the period of response for the 2025 Community Satisfaction Survey. So if anyone asks about it, encourage them, if they receive the invitation to participate. If they haven't yet already, we will close it on the 31st and then start compiling results into a report that we will bring back to council. The plan right now is to have that brought back to you the first meeting in May. And so we look forward to not only seeing what the results from this year's survey are, but also being able to compare now this year's results to last year's results. And so any questions about that? Okay, that's the extent of my report, Mayor.
Okay. Well, then that brings us right into number six workshop discussions and it's the second to last item, so we must be almost done. So, so we are, we are going to embark here on our capital investment strategy. You guys have some handouts in front of you and I will let Mark take it away with Kyle as backup.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to kick off and just very quickly mention, we've got a discussion for you tonight. We've talked about this for a while. This is a very important discussion. However, we consider this to be a starting point. Obviously, we want to bring information to you that allows you over time to make informed decisions. But this is going to be an ongoing dialogue that we're going to start tonight. The purpose of tonight's conversation is to present some information, give plenty of opportunity for you to ask questions, have dialogue amongst yourselves. We won't be asking you to make any decisions tonight, although we do have a couple of recommendations that you'll see at the end that if you agree, we will bring some action back at a future council meeting for consideration. But before I hand it over to Kyle, we've got this presentation essentially broken down into two pieces. The first one is going to be a financial piece that Kyle will walk us through. Then we'll take a short intermission and then we'll come back and we'll talk about some procedural and scheduling things that we want you to be aware of. Just as by way of reminder, we have a comprehensive plan. As you know, Lisa and her team primarily are responsible for walking the city through its update. And they are in the midst of that and we've talked about that at various workshops. There have been actions that have come before you related to that and there will be more as we go forward. But the comprehensive plan kind of sets the tone for development, growth, land use, all of those big picture kinds of planning items, economic development, some other things. And then we also have, the city has a strategic plan that council adopted back in 2024. And as you go through both of those documents, and hopefully you've read at least the strategic plan recently, because we adopted it a year or so ago, the comprehensive plan has been adopted prior to that several years ago. It's a, it's a fairly lengthy document. We're in the process of updating it. But regardless, it's sprinkled with policies and different goals, as is the strategic plan with priorities and results. And so a lot of the language that you see in the comprehensive plans, goals and policies, and in the strategic plans, priorities and results have to do with capital improvements. And so the purpose of tonight's discussion is to kind of start the dialogue to develop a more deliberate, methodological process for investing in capital assets between now and the end of the cap, the new comprehensive plan's horizon, which will end in 2045. And so with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Kyle, who is going to start this evening's discussion with the piece on financing tools. Again, this is designed to be a dialogue and so as we go forward, ask questions, talk amongst yourselves, and we will go from first part to second part with an intermission in between. So Kyle, take it away.
Thanks, Mark. While Evan pulls that up, thank you, Mayor and Council. So yeah, we'll, we're going to walk through a handful of slides tonight. Please interrupt me as I'm talking to talk through, digest, discuss amongst yourselves any of the items contained here. And I know financing is a dense subject, but please feel free to interrupt me kind of as we're going through this. So without further ado, Evan, can you transfer to the next slide, please? So I know this is hard to see. So what you have in front of you is a, kind of a, a offshoot of what we put in our budget every year, which is our six-year revenue and expense forecast. And so this is comprised of all of the funds which can generate capital revenue for us to tackle things on our six-year CFP. And so as you can see, you know, general fund, we carry a pretty hefty balance. We started 2025 with $8.5 million in, in beginning balance for the general fund. It has never been that high. We usually, I would say, an average over the previous six or seven years has been closer to four to six million, I would say. And so, so we are beginning 2025 with a very healthy beginning fund balance. In the general fund, we are allocating a significant amount of those resources as a mechanism to deliver a proposed $5.7 million library project at Legacy Church. And so we've obviously had several different discussions about what the future of that looks like. Are we going to end up at Town Square? Are we going to, are we going to re-engineer any of our existing facilities to accomplish a new library slash community center? So we have those discussions still upcoming that all play a role into what this is eventually going to look like. I think we're all aware, if you go down, we'll, we'll just tackle these kind of one by one. We did have a significant surplus with the overlap of the retirement of the utility tax and the implementation of the TBD tax. So we have allocated an inter-fund transfer of $500,000 from our operating streets fund to our capital streets fund in 2025. And so we have that obviously earmarked for future horizontal construction within the city. And then we all know about our REIT taxes, one and two. You'll see a little bit of a change between, especially as we get into 2026 and going forward, the amount we're able to put away for REIT one versus REIT two. We have earmarked obviously prepayment or repayment, I should say, of the trailhead financing, as well as we do have some operating costs that live within that fund now specifically dedicated to capital project delivery. And so that is a portion of our public works staff specifically dedicated to execution of those capital projects. And as we make our way down, again, you'll see Streets Capital Fund, that's our existing fund balance that we ended 2024 with and began 2024 with, $720,000. We have our Harvard Road impact fees that we earmark, usually a project either, usually about every other year within that boundary that we collect those impact fees from. We've, we've talked about the Library Capital Fund several times over the last year and that's where that currently sits. We'll have $500,000 in 2025 between a beginning balance and revenue for that fund as well. Municipal Facilities Fund Master Plan. So this was set aside. We will chew through this balance through our master planning activities. We currently have comprehensive planning. We have Parks Master Plan. We dedicated a little bit to our, to our library design towards this as well. And so this is kind of a catch-all for master planning activities. This fund will eventually be exhausted with our 20-year capital planning activities currently underway. And finally, we have Stormwater APA. We completed the Stormwater Master Plan last year. The discussion on the financing side largely revolved around the potential retirement of the APA revenue and a corresponding increase in stormwater fees. And so we are still keeping a pulse on what the county eventually decides to do. I don't want to put you on the spot, Mark, but if you can remember, are they planning to put that forward on a ballot this year for renewal?
So that is my understanding.
Okay. And Lisa's nodding her head. So, so that is a stay tuned. If that passes, at the moment, no further needed, no further action needed. If that fails, we'll have to pivot, potentially consider an increase in stormwater fees because they largely accomplish the same goal. Mitigation of any, of any materials into the aquifer is largely a stormwater function. So you see those two blended very closely together in terms of capital projects that, that go towards those activities. Yes, Linda?
Just this morning, there was an article in the paper that Spokane, the city might be putting, well, I think they are going to put on the ballot to go back into the Aquifer Protection Act. So.
So that's.
Those government spokesmen this morning.
Late breaking news. So.
City Council voted to consider that for a ballot measure for Spokane.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So how would that affect us?
Honestly, I, if I look back through and Lisa can comment on that, I can't, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
For the county to move forward with the ballot measure, they really needed an economy of scale in terms of jurisdictions and they needed either the city of the valley or the city of Spokane, one or the other, to participate. As it appears right now, it looks like both are going to participate. So that actually really reinforces the value of it.
Oh, okay. Great.
And I think if memory serves me, that's about a 180 from what we heard last year. So that's, yeah. So, so yeah, that's, that's obviously a positive development that we found out today that I'm finding out right now. So we, we will incorporate that going forward, not that that changes anything on here, but that just kind of reinforces that support and that funding stream for years ahead, assuming that ballot measure passes. So. And so that encapsulates our current fund revenue that is attributed to capital projects. And we pushed this obviously out to 2030. We have a very sparse population of grants and other revenue. That is by design. We are only secured our current SRTC grant for Mission Avenue overlay of just over a million dollars. We have several others that we have applied for that we'll get into here in a little bit, but we have not secured them. So we're not including them in this forecast. And so we're going to, this is kind of the base of operations that we'll operate out of during this discussion. And so we'll return to this kind of as we go along. And so before we go to the next slide, please, Evan, can anybody guess in our current five-year capital facilities plan, if we have more or less than $18.5 million in projects? Next slide, please. So the first three rows on here total just over $32 million. And so you can see that obviously that leaves us a deficit of about 13 and a half million dollars. And that's obviously, this is, this is a very needed discussion to have. But this also assumes that we are not going to get several grants or we're not going to do anything between now and then to address this deficit. We have many tools in the toolbox to address this deficit and we're already taking advantage of some. And so if you want to, real quick, just go to the next slide, please, Evan. So we're going to look at sources of funds for a good chunk of, of our time together today during our finance review. And so obviously the first one, when you were looking at capital project delivery, grants are king. So it's, it's not free money, but it's free money in the sense that we have, we have, we have excelled in getting these competitive grants over other jurisdictions that would otherwise use them. So this is a competition between us and other local governments, districts to compete for these funds that are already being collected, either at the local, state or federal level. And so grants are paramount for us to be able to execute everything that we have on our five-year CFP. Go ahead.
Question.
Yeah.
We've always been pretty good about being able to match funds and stuff. Is that, has that been advantageous to us about getting some of these grants?
That is huge. And having that 18.5.
Right.
To put towards a match puts us in a much better position when the state agencies or local agencies, probably to a lesser extent, federal agencies are evaluating applications. They're getting, and so all of these funds are competitive. And so we have to stand out somehow. And letting them know that we have skin in the game goes a long way for us securing these funds. And so the big ones that we have are really on the state level. Transportation Improvement Board is probably the single biggest state agency that we've been able to take advantage of. They get a state allocation every biennium and those are very competitive funds. But we, we always put together a very, an extremely advantageous funding package for them to review. And we've been obviously rewarded several times for that through their awards. And their award cycle is released, I believe it's every September. And so when you, Evan, can you go back to our six-year capital forecast? Back one more. Perfect. And so as you, as you see here, we haven't populated anything outside of the SRTC grant. We know that we are going to be successful in securing grants past what you see here. And so we currently have a $937,000 Commerce Grant towards the construction of the library. Whether it goes through at that site or not, we have not included that on here. We currently have an application in for a line item appropriation in the state budget for a million dollars for a Mission Avenue, a different, different Mission Avenue project that we're anticipating hearing back on a couple of months.
Soon.
So, yeah. So, so we have all of these different opportunities currently being evaluated that's going to shrink this deficit. We have several other state agencies that we are going to be aggressive at, securing these grants, DOT, Commerce, Ecology. There are, there are programs out there that the city can and will take advantage of to reduce this deficit. And so what you see here is not what is going to be the final product in terms of our capital revenue forecast. On the other side of that, we are currently undertaking, and Mark and Lisa will get into this in a little bit, master planning activities that will no doubt elicit other projects that are currently not on our five-year CFP. So this is a constantly ebbing and flowing document that, you know, the, the goal tonight is just to give you all of the tools in the toolbox to be able to make the decisions to address these things as they come up. So let's fast forward, Evan, to, back to our sources of funds. Perfect. Thank you. So outside of grants, we do have additional revenue that the, the city can execute to further reduce that gap. And one of them was just implemented last year. So we do have a TBD sales tax. It's 0.1%. And so that generates roughly $850,000 a year. We're putting that towards street operations right now. And so the state allows up to a 0.3%. Anything above a point one is taken to the voters. So if this is eventually deemed in a more advantageous funding mechanism, this is one that we can take to the voters and they could say yes or no, and we can proceed accordingly. That is potentially, you know, in increments of one, an additional 850,000 a year, more or less. We currently have about $340,000 of bank capacity. We've touched on this, especially during the budget process of a pure councilmatic function can recoup that difference. And our current, our current tax per $1,000 of assessed valuation is 88 cents. If we decide to recoup that full 340,000, that would bring us to 97 cents per 1,000. So we're still under a dollar, which wasn't the case a couple of years ago. So, so we have those that are additional revenue streams. We have, there are programs on the state level that offer very, very low interest loans, potentially loan grant combos. So the state treasury's local program is used to finance real estate and there's one more and it escapes me right now, but they have a, but their program is basically a lease-to-buy program. And so you are part of a collective and they charge very low interest, Public Works Trust Fund. I, I think we all, and if you don't, we know the, the current direction of the Public Works Trust Fund and it is getting whittled away year after year. So the ability to take advantage of some of those funds is not what it was a couple of years ago, but the program is still there. And if it's advantageous for us to take advantage of that, we'll look into that as well. And so go ahead, Linda.
So how does this Public Works Trust Fund work? I mean, where does the money?
So it is, so it's a pool that gets allocated again every biennium by, by the state budget adoption. And it has been a source for the state to help balance their budget by grabbing a piece of that every two years and shrinking that program. And so in, in its heyday, I, it was a phenomenal program. It still is, but it's just, it doesn't have the reach that it once had. And so, but this is mostly for water sewer, street construction, things.
So it's diminishing as well?
Yes, it's diminishing and the pool of available funds is diminishing as the state grapples with how they're going to balance their budget. I wouldn't imagine that this program increases anytime soon. So. Federal loans, we weren't, we're not going to get into those. If the opportunity arises somehow and it's beneficial for us to cut through the mile of red tape to secure those funds, we'll bring that back to you. I'm not optimistic that that's something that we would take advantage of anytime soon. So that's, it's there. So we'll just kind of leave it at that. So the rest of these are going to be, these funding are going to be revolved around what, from what I'm hearing, what we're going to take to the voters for their consideration for potentially a mixed-use library community center. It can obviously be used for any number of different things for street improvements all the way to any, any other capital project delivery that we have. Next slide, please, Evan. And so again, through the lens of, we're taking something to the voters, they approve it. Here is the execution mechanism by which we secure a voter-approved bond. And so we went through this exercise when we were discussing Trailhead. We have publicly issued bonds. Those have lower interest rates, higher upfront costs. Banks, they have potentially higher interest rates, lower upfront costs, a quicker mechanism to execute and have available funds. And so we'll get into these a little bit. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this because we'll get into the mechanism of what is going to be approvable by a ballot measure here on the next couple of sites as well. So next slide, please. This is another mechanism by which the city can take a measure to the voters. And this is a levy lid lift is collecting a tax that its maximum statutory levy rate may ask simply by a majority of voters. It's a 50 plus one. We'll get into that again on the next slide. But this is a mechanism by which the voters approve a mechanism to increase the maximum statutory rate. Our current taxing rate again is 88 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Our maximum statutory is $2.10 for $1,000. And to translate that into dollars, we currently collect about $3.2 million in property tax every year. If a levy lid lift to the maximum statutory rate was approved, which we'll, we're not really going to consider, but it's a tool in the toolbox, we would collect a maximum of 7.5 annually. So these are mechanisms again by which we can generate funds if needed to close this deficit that we see. Next slide, please. And so these are, these are kind of the real world impacts that these would have on our voters and our residents who approve these. And so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of redirect our attention back to if we take a bond or we take a ballot to the voters to develop Town Square into a library slash community center. And then we have additional improvements that needed to be made to the additional library. This is a complete swag of $18 million. This, this has no basis in anything that our design team is working on right now. This is just to show you what the potential outcome would look like. So for financing $18 million, our average annual debt service at the current rates would be a little over 950,000 a year. Our average annual debt service per 1,000 is 26 cents and the average annual debt service per home would be $133. So this is items for consideration as we continue to discuss library slash community center development at Town Square Center. If eventual use or sale or anything included therein with Legacy Church, our current city hall building as we build out our master facilities plan. What you're going to have on the April 1st agenda is an appraisal that council ordered last month regarding City Hall, Town Square and the Legacy Church Building. And so that's another piece of this that all kind of flows together. Next slide, please, Evan. Go ahead.
On slide six, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding what the slide represents. Because you said number, like the numbers and tonight's kind of a deep topic.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
So if nothing else changed and we funded an $18 million project, nothing else changing, it would raise my taxes by $133 or anybody else's per?
Correct. Per $500,000 of assessed value per year.
Okay.
That's an additional 133.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's based on five hundred.
That's based on five hundred. Obviously, you know, um. We can reevaluate kind of what the average property. Exactly. Evaluation might be, but uh, but you can, you can infer any number of different things based on property value that, that, that would. Attribute to your own personal situation. So. Uh, so state laws limit general obligation debt. We have gone through this exercise a couple of times as well. Um, it is good information to have. It is not going to be used to execute any number of different. Packages that leave us with forty million dollars of debt. This is purely just an exercise to know what our capacity is. If uh we do decide to take a ballot measure out to the voters and we get it approved. Uh, this is the exercise that is required to make sure that we're within our lawful um taxing power. So um, the limit is based on our assessed valuation. And cities, and so you can see there's, there's several overlapping characteristics or, or, or um. Uh, situations at play here. So uh, we're just one component of several districts that overlap here. And so obviously, when you get your property tax bill, you see. City of Liberty Lake, you see Spokane County, you see school districts, you see uh fire district, you see EMS. And so these all overlap. Uh, for a total and, and it's not to confuse what you see here of ten dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed value. And so, but these individually are the different maximum taxing percentages per that district's assessed value. Next slide please Evan. Uh, and so if you go to um each, so the limited tax, so we have our assessed value of three point five billion. We have our limited tax general obligation capacity of one point five percent. That's. Our maximum is fifty three point six million. We currently have five point six million that we're paying down on the Trailhead note. Uh, along with other leases, our heavy equipment that are uh also counted against this maximum. So our limited tax, general obligation debt, usually attributed to property tax. That's, that's the most common one that you do with limited tax uh is forty seven point five million or eleven percent. Uh, we're currently used towards that capacity. So we have unlimited. Tax, general obligation debt, which you can use sales tax, you can use property tax, you can use any revenue sources towards uh that repayment. Uh, that per our assess value is eighty nine point five million. Uh, so our current remaining capacity. Or unlimited uh geo debt is eighty three point three million. So, but that's just. Correct. So.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead and answer.
Uh, so just to be clear, so then our borrowing power is eighty three thousand?
Is eighty three point three million for the city only. And so there's, there's any number of exercises that get into the absurd. So we own and operate our own parks. So the state allows an additional two point five percent. Uh, statutory maximum for parks as well. So on top of that, that's an additional ninety million. That the city has that we're not including for this. Uh, and then uh cities, they have utilities, have an additional two point five percent. And so you, you get into these absurd taxing or, or debt obligation ceilings that. Are really just window dressing. They aren't used for any realistic evaluation. So.
Kyle, you can go ahead and call on people.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so paraphrase Colin's observation, without voter approval, this council could establish forty seven million approximately in debt. And with voter approval, this uh city could accrue uh eight, about eighty three million in total debt.
Correct. Go ahead.
You, you mentioned the other, the, the city, we own our own parks and stuff without dollar mounted equation that, does that also include the trailhead which we own?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And that's, and that is charged against what you see here as well. So.
You're lumping that into the uh parks.
Correct. Oh, oh, we're, we're lumping it into the city. It could be charged against parks, but this is for our, for our discussion. This is a city owned facility. Chad.
Yeah, thanks Kyle. Um, I, I just want to say that I appreciate your emphasis and multiple uses of the word absurd. Thank you.
It's kind of like.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Like when, when I go, go to Macy's and something's on sale. Hey honey, I, I saved two hundred and fifty dollars, but you spent seven hundred and fifty. Kind of how it feels.
Yes, don't we know that? So.
Before we move off of this slide, would you uh clarify again, just to make sure that we've level set? Um, that the two numbers in limited and unlimited are only using the first two and a half percent.
Correct. Yes. So the state provides for up to seven and a half percent if you. Own and operate your own parks and owner op- operate your own utilities. So then if we want, if we want to get really wild, let's get crazy. It'd be closer to two hundred and forty million. But let's, 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 let's leave that there. So. Uh, next slide please Evan.
How much can we net if we sell the city right now?
We might be able to fund that third lane to.
Uh, so these are the um. The potential options for if the city ever decides to put a ballot measure together to tackle obvious. Any number of things that we've talked about. Uh, I, I think our latest discussion has revolved again around uh. The potential development of the library at Town Square. Uh, and so we'll go through these. So your unlimited. Uh, tax, general obligation bond. Uh, any term. Ballot approval rate must be sixty percent with a forty percent validation requirement. That is very important when we're discussing timing of any potential ballot measure that we put together. Uh, so. Um, I would say over the last five years, our general election has always met that forty percent validation threshold. None of our specials have. So we're basically throwing money away if we put this on a special election. Because we're going to get twenty five percent turnout and regardless, if it is approved by eighty percent, uh, the. Um, the ballot gets tossed. And so, so really our only useful mechanism, if we're taking a measure to the voters for. For these options is the general election. And so.
Um, I, I really take exception to say we're throwing our money away.
Okay.
Because if we're spending money to get information and give the option to our citizens, that's pretty good.
Absolutely. And I don't disagree with that. Yeah. Right. I don't disagree with that, but I, I think my point was more towards. Um, we should only really be shooting for the general action because that gets us the most participation.
Right.
So Kyle, to paraphrase, in a wild hair absurd to use the gesture, uh, we appoint a special election. For decision that we think is really important for the people of our community. Uh, given that um not forty percent of the people actually turn out to present a vote. Regardless of the outcome of the vote, it is irrelevant.
Correct.
That's what I heard you say.
Correct.
That's forty percent of who turned out for the previous general, right?
I, I would have to clarify that, but I, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
So, I mean, for me, that what's, what's emphatic is um participation in the vote is, is absolutely critical to determine its outcome.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
And that's on a special.
If, if we appoint an election that has a less than forty percent turnout, the vote is irrelevant. The outcome is irrelevant.
That would be special or, you, God forbid, we get a less than forty percent on our general. Then that same, same situation applies that, that ballot fails no matter what.
Again, that's forty percent of the turnout for the previous. Go ahead.
We're only talking about the bond here. If we go for an unlimited uh bond. Um, to Councilmember Kennedy's point, you know, we could, we could put in advisory vote on any ballot if we were to.
Yes.
And that would still tell us whatever we were trying to ask in that advisory vote. What, what you were saying, uh, Kyle, relates specifically to a bond. Uh, if we go out for a bond, it is foolish to do it. In a February election or an April or an August, because the chances of you getting the forty percent are very, very low.
Correct.
So we could, we could run a bond vote in one of those elections, but it would be a waste of money unless we hit the forty percent.
Correct. Go ahead Annie.
I have questions about elections and so I, I think, I think what Mayor Vertem just said. Made sense. So we're talking about February, March, anything off besides a November election.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah.
So you, yeah, so primaries in August, specials run, I believe two other times per year, and then your general is in November. Go ahead Linda.
I, I think my question is more for Chris. So you're saying that uh, which forty, oh, Chris Mayor. Um, forty percent eh, from the previous general, as in other words, as many people, okay, gotcha. Okay.
So if ten thousand people showed, showed up and voted for the last general election, you would need four thousand people to, to vote in that next.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
And, and my, my confirmation was from the um county elections official that evaluated our last five years of uh. Specials and primaries, and we did not reach that forty percent threshold at any of them. So, so uh kind of pivoting over to the levy lid lift vote, limited tax, general obligation bond. Obviously levy lid lift is purely narrowly focused on property taxes. It is limited to nine years. And so it, and before I, before I get too far into this, I do want to let everybody know. That we're not going, everything that you have in your packet here, we're not going to present tonight. There's an appendix that what you have in front of you. That gets a lot more granular into all of these different um potential financing scenarios. Uh, that are probably better served for when decisions are made, we're a little bit further down the road. So there's, there's, this, this is a little bit more high level. Given you kind of what, what the tools are in the toolbox um eh, in, in terms of. Um, I guess pivoting back to levy lid lift, um. It is limited to nine years uh for debt financing. Um, you can do. A levy lid lift in perpetuity. I, I, I really, I, I. Would have a hard time finding any entity that has actually done that. You have a, you have a target for those funds. And once you use them, the levy lid expires and reverts back to the previous uh. Assessed value uh per one thousand. So um, but tha- that said, the ballot approval rate is a simple fifty plus one. There is no validation requirement. You can run these um at, at different, or I, I believe it's only on the general, but I, I have to double check. That um. That the, uh, it is fifty plus one. I have to double check if these can be run during specials or primaries.
I'm pretty sure they can.
And so, and so to that point, there are um, there are timing uh. Situations at play there when you get this information back to the county on when they can start implementing that lid lift tax. And so. A little bit less of a threshold to meet that levy lid lift. And obviously you have uh with the bond. Um, uh, lower debt limit uh per assessed value uh for your maximum statutory leverage. Next slide please Evan. So this, so we, we kind of breeze through that. Really, I, I think um, the main focus on a financing side. This will all um, uh, kind of mesh with, with what Mark and Lisa will present to you uh tonight as well. Is that the city will obviously prioritize grants to the greatest extent. Um, if and when we determine that uh additional revenue by way of. Banked capacity, um, uh, additional TBD taxing mechanism. Any of those others are pri- are, are prioritized over loans, bonds, anything that requires us to incur. Uh, further financing or debt. So, um, and then just, just the different mechanisms that we already talked about. Bonds, potentially lower rates, bank loans, lower upfront costs. Uh, and then what we just talked about with our uh levy. But, and so uh with that, I, I guess I'll, I'll stand for any questions on the material. Again, um. As, as you review the rest of these, uh, we get a little bit more into detail on kind of a. Financing one O one with the rest of the slides that I don't think is necessarily appropriate for tonight. So, and it is fantastic reading material. So.
Yeah, Kyle, um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, just so I kind of understand on the. Numbers on, on slide two.
Yep.
Um, you said that, that these uh numbers do include the, the five point seven for the development of the legacy. Church building.
They do. Yeah.
Okay. So, so if I'm looking at this correctly, now, did you say next week we're going to have the appraisals back or are we approving?
So we're approving uh a um commercial real estate vendor to go out and perform that work. That turnaround time will be about four or five weeks.
Okay. So if I'm looking at this correctly, you take that thirteen forty two deficit. Um, if we don't build a library, then that five point seven comes off the top, right?
Correct.
And if we were to sell that building, whatever amount we get uh in, in um. Proceeds from that building, let's say three, that would uh, that would bring this deficit all the way down to under five million.
Potentially. Yeah. So there's, and there are, that's, that is a, that's a good example. There are. Almost an infinite amount of different scenarios that can play out between now and when a lot of these projects are going to come forward to the city. That will increase or decrease that deficit. And so we have, Evan, if you can uh kind of return to slide two, so we can um. Evaluate that a little bit further. Yep. Uh, so one, but one, one before that. So um, I, a- as we all know, we talked about this before, we began twenty twenty five with eight point five million dollars. In uh general fund beginning balance. That amount was three and a half million dollars, I think, four years ago. And so we are generating surplus with the revenues that we currently receive, operating revenues and otherwise. And the expenses that we budget for. So we budget for revenues to hit a certain mark. They have consistently exceeded that. We've budgeted for expenses to hit a certain mark. We've consistently um ended the year below that. That creates surplus as well, and that creates the ability that you see here of us to put three million dollars towards a library. Or any other potential uh capital projects that we see. So there are, there are hidden opportunities in here. To generate additional capital revenue that I am not comfortable giving you today because I don't know the answer to that. And so again, they, they, this is a going, this is an ever evolving um document. This is an ever evolving. Um, planning situation that we're bringing you tonight. So. Linda?
Oh, well, I think, yeah, I think Wendy was, or just a while back and then no.
That's okay. Kyle.
Yeah.
You had talked about the bond vote being um property tax.
Yes.
Okay, well, so is a levy li- lift, correct?
So the bond is an unlimited tax general obligation. So you can use, so for a bond, you can use property tax. You can use sales tax. You can use all of your different revenues to repay that. Your levy lid lift is a limited tax and that is only property tax. So.
Thanks for the clarification.
Linda, go ahead. Okay, you, she asked the question basically I was going to ask, but um. Uh, okay, never mind. She, yeah, that was it.
Uh, two, uh, well, actually more than two things Kyle. Um, first of all, I appreciated your comments about. Um, this constantly being an ebbing flowing document because I think it's important to point that out. I mean, when I voted for the. Uh, our six year plan, uh, you know, I, I went into it anticipating that we weren't going to be able to fund every single thing right on time. With it. It was going to change. It was going to, you know, adjust over time. Um, I do think we, we should. I, I know technically it's correct, but I think it, it's more accurate to call these unfunded. Um, projects as opposed to a deficit. I think deficit implies that um. That it's something that we have already allocated for and that we're going to be um, that, that we're going to be uh searching for. And needing in, in the next couple of years. And while obviously these are in our plans, they're not necessarily things that we have to do. I mean, if we got into a sticky situation, we could cross this one off or we could cross that one off. So I think that's important to point out. If you go to a slide two, back this I do, thank you. So the thirteen point four um million on the. Deficit or.
I, I, I prefer your, your verbiage as well as funded just is, is more accurate.
If we divided that up, uh, um, uh, if we divided that up by six years, the, the total of this plan, we're looking at two point two million. Per year, which I mean is, is completely doable with uh, with the um, with the options that we have. Um, I, I also want to point out, you know, we are, we all got pretty excited and I, I saw a lot of eyes. Go wide open on page eight when we were talking about how much we could take out if we wanted to. Um, specifically the forty seven million uh number, I mean, just cross off the eighty three million, but the forty seven million number. We're talking about thirty nine hundred dollars per citizen that we could take out for some sort of, of uh bond or debts. Uh, in the city. And I don't think anyone in, on the, around the table wants to do that. Um. And then there was one other note I was gonna make here. And I'll have to come back to it, but those are my initial thoughts. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, next.
All right, thank you.
So hold on one second. But before we break, would you clarify, they've got the appendix in front of them. We're not going to go through the appendix. But clarify that it's directly focused on bond uh, tools. And and there are the other tools that we've talked about aren't necessarily found in here, although you would have potentially a comparably dense set of appendices for each of those tools if we wanted to go to those depths.
Correct. And so the the reason that we have our voter approved scenarios in here is specifically revolving around some impending decision regarding the future of the library. And so this this obviously is more tailored to that discussion than us putting together an independent bond package to go fund twenty billion dollars of street improvements. And so this is specifically geared towards that impending discussion that the city is going to have.
And we can get into as much detail about any of these tools. Really, the purpose of part one was to demonstrate the fact that, and I'm going to use the word gap versus deficit. There's a gap. And there's a number of ways that we can combine strategies to close that gap, including controlling the expenditure side. And so those are all things that over time we're going to need to look at. But we wanted to just give you a a healthy picture of what the available tools that have most within our reach to address the gap. And so with that, if there are any other questions, we'll field them here. Otherwise, I would recommend that we take a ten minute recess because this is a lot of numbers. There's, when we come back, there'll be a quiz. And then we will go into part two and talk about process.
Yeah, make one more quick comment. I think it's important as we consider what we're going to be doing with the library and a town square situation that we don't look past that and make a request or a proposal or a package so big that it overwhelms the entire discussion, overwhelms a public vote, if that's what we're going to do. I mean, I would hate for us to to be in a situation where we could propose a, you know, a nine million dollar bond or whatever to fund a town square slash library facility. But then we look at that thirteen million number and say, oh, my gosh, we we got to do something about that, too. So let's make it, you know, twenty two million. And then the whole thing just falls apart, right?
Yeah.
All right, we'll be back at seven oh three. All right, welcome back, everybody. Sorry, we all got a little punchy and a couple of minutes late here. So we're going to go ahead and jump into the second part of our meeting. Going to turn it back over to City Administrator Mark McAvoy.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And as Evan is pulling up the slide deck that we have for you, we realize that anytime we're throwing a bunch of numbers at you, that that takes a while. And so we're not expecting for that to be part of this conversation materially. Obviously, we at the very outset, we're going to talk about hot level, we'll we'll revisit what we call the gap, just to reclarify as we go forward. But really, the purpose of the second part of the conversation is to talk about whether or not we have a gap that is positive or negative, whether we have two projects on the plan, whether we have twenty five projects on the plan. We've recognized for a while, we meaning staff, and I think council through various conversations, both at project approval and at budget development and adoption have had the conversation about. And and I'll re- reflect back on some questions that specifically Councilmember Kurtz has asked, what is the right number, right? And and we've kind of talked about what we need to do and to have in order to bring back the right number across the various types of infrastructure that we have. And once we have that, how to manage the program effectively so that we're delivering the right level of investment in the right place at the right time for the right reasons. And so the second part of the conversation focused on the those collection, that collection of things. And so with that, let's let's dive in. Evan, if you can go, and there's some transitions in here, just so that we can not be looking at content. By the way, I've set this so that everyone in the audience can see. And if you're viewing from the hillside out there, you should be able to read this font. And so as we go through, there's not a lot of reading here, so I want to just kind of prompt conversation for this. And so the setting that we want to talk about is both the present and the future. You heard through Kyle's presentation, that's kind of our position. That's our financial position. It ebbs and flows based on revenues that come in, decisions that are made about expenditures, opportunities to pursue grants, those types of things. That's our position. And so if you can go to the next slide, Evan, and this is really the kind of revisitation of the bulk of Kyle's presentation, just to reset as we go and to some process things. Kyle didn't include some of these line items in there. I wanted to give you a full picture of if an individual right now goes onto the website, gets into our budget document, goes into the capital facilities plan and goes down to the bottom right, they're going to see that number, thirty two million, six hundred and seventy eight thousand and some change as the six year total of all of the project estimated costs. And so from a capital facilities plan perspective, that is the value of those projects. And it includes things that aren't necessarily tangible assets, right? It includes some planning efforts. It includes well, mostly planning efforts. And then everything in the rows, parks and public facilities and above would constitute tangible assets. And so Evan, if we move on to the next one.
Question.
Yes, sir.
And that's in today's money.
That that is in twenty twenty five dollars with a programmed inflation rate of, remind me, eight percent? So so it's twenty five dollars plus some inflation rates, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. If you look at the funding forecast, and this is what, excuse me, Kyle went through. With all of the funds that are available that we use for cap funding capital projects, investing in capital projects, the estimated revenue for that same period of time is eighteen point five million. And so as we just talked about, there's that gap that we have to close using any combination of things, identifying new revenue sources, cutting expenditures, essentially removing projects from the to do list or or other mechanisms. In addition to that, right, if you go to the next slide, Evan, we also have at the end of the CFP, this potential future projects list, which up until this year, we call the unfunded projects list. These do not have costs associated with them, but they're above zero, right? So these would add to currently that gap of approximately fourteen million dollars or so. And that is for the six year period that for, it sounds like I'm cutting out again, twenty five to thirty. And then you'll see some information as we go downstream that kind of sets this in context for future years. And so that's all you're going to see with respect to numbers here until a little bit later, but they're not dollars anymore. And so really, that that is our position, right? That's our financial position. We've talked about that. You know what that is. We'll continue to manage that as we move forward. For for the rest of the conversation, we want to shift and and start talking about planning, developing and executing the capital program. And so, again, I'll reiterate, whether we have two projects on the slate or twenty projects on the slate, we want to be able to plan, develop, deliver and manage those projects in an integrated, strategic, effective way. That doesn't mean that we haven't been doing that. It means we recognize that there's some improvements to be had. And tonight's conversation is to talk to you about what improvements we're planning, what improvements we've already implemented. And then there's one improvement that we are going to to ask you to intervene to to create some structure, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. Evan, if you go to the next slide. And before we get any deeper into this, I'll point out that both the Public Works Director and the Community Development Director here, they will be participating and contributing at points along the way. If you have questions as we go through, this, again, this is meant to be a dialogue. We're all here to help answer that. I believe Jen Camp is also on the line. She's got a piece of this, too, on the implementation side. And so we're all available to help answer those questions. So really, this is framed in the context of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is the document or the plan, it it resides in a document that has the longest horizon of any. It's the most forward looking and outward looking of all of our plans. And it's really made up. Implementing it is made up of both private and public investment. It's interesting because I believe it's on the, at least it's planned for an upcoming workshop within the next couple of council meetings to talk about a TIF lift project update. That is exclusively on the private investment side. And there are other private investments that go into this, but we have an update for you that is on the private investment side when it comes to particularly capital investment. The remainder of our conversation tonight is going to be on the public investment side. That's where the city comes in. That's where partners with the city come in. And we're investing in infrastructure, we're investing in equipment, we're investing in other types of systems that meet community needs and economic development objectives. And so focus your attention on the public investment side as we go through. Evan, if you'll go to the next one. And we just are kind of talking context here, setting, right? And so again, the comprehensive plan is this twenty year horizon. Lisa and her team are in the process of walking the city through the update, which will be adopted by the end of twenty twenty six. We talked a little bit about that. So it takes it out, that plan horizon out to twenty forty five. And so within this discussion, we're talking about making sure that we have a strategy to plan, develop, deliver and fund capital projects, investing capital funds over a twenty year period out to twenty forty five. How that relates to the capital facility plan, the comp plan influences and informs the capital facilities plan and the capital facilities plan implements the comprehensive plan in the same relationship. The strategic plan is a five year horizon. This council, with a couple of exceptions of folks that were elected after it was adopted, went through that process, but you've all heard about it. We've talked about it on numerous occasions. That's a five year horizon. That's talking more about operations and what the city does to deliver services in that five year time horizon. But that's influencing informing the annual budget, and then the annual budget is implementing the strategic plan. So you have this cycle of of things that all are interrelated. And so that's the context, that's the playing field that we're talking about. And so Evan, if you go to the next slide, this is where I'm going to ask Lisa to start coming up. If you look at this a different way, in addition to the comprehensive plans, our plan, the strategic plan that is currently adopted and all of the ones that we would expect to adopt in five year increments going out, we've got all of these other master plans that have either been adopted or in the process of being developed for adoption. We've got the capital facilities plan that's adopted and all of the ones that would expect to be adopted, and then your annual budget on the bottom. This is kind of the landscape of what we're talking about. So capital investment occurs at the annual budget time, but it encapsulates all of these other things that have happened or happened in parallel. And so Lisa, do you want to describe how maybe we're going to introduce a new tool to help with this over the long term?
Yeah. So so first of all, I'd just like to talk about the six year capital facility planning process. That is mandated. That's the minimum period that you can do it. It is how you implement your comprehensive plan, absolutely. And y'all have been party to at least a few of those along the way. And as you know, the way we operate now, we're only funding the projects that are in the budget year. We're projecting other needs and prioritizing them and trying to anticipate funding sources, et cetera. But nearly every year, we end up doing some shuffling of projects because suddenly, oh, my gosh, the road blew up. And now that's a high priority where we thought we we had two or three years before we had to get to it. Those sorts of things happen regularly. Or a revenue stream, looking at, looking at our revenue streams, our staff capacity, et cetera. We try and spread that out to make it a little bit more realistic from an implementation timeframe. The reality is that as we look at this comprehensive plan, we are going to realize build out in the next twenty years. Now is the time to really look at that twenty year capital investment plan to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity to make sure that roadway is going to meet the growth that we're going to experience, that we have enough parks to meet the community's vision for what we should be providing in terms of recreational facilities, et cetera. We have a number of strategic master plan or master plans that are going to help us inform that twenty year plan. But we really have to think of it as a constraint, a fiscally constrained plan and give some thought to how we're going to finance this over the twenty year period. When we look at a capital facilities plan through a six year window, it's kind of like doing financial planning through a keyhole. You wouldn't wait until six years before you retire to plan for your retirement. And and so as we look at, we've got twenty years to really plan for this build out. Now is the time we have to do it. I I again, we just completed the stormwater master plan, which which was a piece of our capital facilities plan. Ben is leading us through a city facilities planning process. We just let a contract for a parks master plan. And Ben's working on a solid waste plan. We also have the pavement master plan, the sidewalk master plan. We will be doing a transportation network analysis that looks at what is the transportation infrastructure that we need for this twenty year build out period? We're taking a very data driven approach. The parks plan is going to identify level of service for our population. PD plans their services based upon population. So as we get this data driven information about what our needs are for this community at build out, the twenty year capital facilities plan is our implementation strategy. And it's going to be critical that we look at what we need for the full build out. If we plan for just the next six years, we get to the end of the six years, and all of a sudden, a a big want slash need of the community that really wasn't ripe yet for development, all of a sudden, we don't have the money for it if we haven't taken the time to really think through how we're going to, how we're going to build out this vision. So that's, it's an exciting opportunity for us, but it's also very challenging to be to be able to look that far into the future. The good news is that with the comprehensive plan, it's not like this is one and done. You do a twenty year plan. We'll still continue every year to do the six year capital facilities plan to update it. That's number one. The other thing is that we will be in five years, we're looking at where we're at in the implementation of our comp plan. And a huge part of that will be where are we in the implementation of our capital facilities plan? So again, it's an exciting time, it's an opportunity, but it's also critical that we don't miss this window to be able to really ensure that this community, that we can build the community that you all envision. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Lisa. And Lisa will be back throughout the rest of the presentation. So as Lisa mentioned, there's a network analysis that would show up in that kind of yellow shaded area of master plans. We could add art, public art. We could add art, public art to this, we could add trees to this, we could add IT, we could add several others. We didn't have room to put them all, but you get the idea that all of these things are contributing to informing and influencing the budget pieces of this. Evan, if you could go to the next slide. So, so with that, that's kind of the landscape. The, one of the major questions now that, that we're here to answer that we've talked about is what are the capital investments that we're going to need to deliver the required infrastructure to implement the comprehensive plan? That's a question that we all get to participate in. Council gets to make those decisions as we move through that planning and implementing cycle that we just looked at. Evan, if you could go to the next slide. So within the planning, well, take it outside of planning. In reality, when you're out in town, driving around town, doing things with your kids, going to the store, going to houses of worship, going to various places in the city that you go, you're seeing and interacting with all of these infrastructure types. And every city has different kinds of infrastructure. We're not in a position as the city government to own and operate our own water and wastewater utilities. So we don't see pipes and pump stations and all of those kinds of things in here. But these are the 12 types of infrastructure that we are responsible for owning, operating, constructing, maintaining, improving. And so some of these are new in terms of type and we've, we've, we've carved them out as individual types because we think they're important enough to isolate so that we can invest in them transparently. But as we go forward and we build the capital facilities plan going forward, if you remember the slide where I showed you the value of the projects, there were, there were four categories of projects. Going forward, you're going to see these in their own categories so that you see exactly what the investment is and what the planned projects are to deliver that investment. And so as we go through the rest of this, we'll be looking at examples from each of these types, but not examples from all of these types. So if you have a question on a future slide, when we're going through an example about a type that we're not using as an example, ask it, we can get into that. We just only have a limited number of examples because we don't want to be here for four hours. So Evan, if you go to the next slide, the second major question that we need to ask and we have asked, and we're going to talk to you about for the remainder of our time together tonight is what is the most effective strategy for planning, funding and delivering that required infrastructure? And so the rest of what we talk about this evening is going to be answering or helping to answer that question. And so Evan, if we go to the next section header here, and, and really the answer is we have to be better at integrating all of those things that we showed you on that kind of Gantt looking chart earlier with all of the plans laid out over time. Some of the things that we are going to talk to you about tonight and show you examples of have already been implemented. We're already doing these things. Some are in the process of being implemented and like I mentioned, at least one of them or one of them will need council action to implement. And we'll talk about that a little bit downstream. All of these things in some way or another are best practice. And so we want to incorporate best practice into our management of the capital program for the city. And so Evan, if you can go to the next one, this is a revisitation of what we just saw and I, and putting it up there just to kind of remind everyone on an annual basis, the cadence of all of this is the annual budget process. So all of, you know, regardless of what's in each of these plans, the, the budget is appropriated on an annual basis. And so everything from the comprehensive plan down through the strategic plan is informing and influencing and in effect dropping projects down and that are being approved and dollars being appropriated to implement those and execute those in an annual budget cycle. So when you look at and talk about integration, we're, we're kind of talking about it in this red band, right? We were, and that red band moves each year to the right. And so we're integrating better, more effectively, more strategically. But we're doing it in one year cadences as we develop the, and adopt the annual budget. Next slide, Evan. And so Lisa mentioned one of these already. This is as we talk about how to do, what does better integration mean? Well, the things in the back in the squares are, are goals. These are the goals that we want to keep in front of us as we're doing these things, as we're, as we're better integrating the capital program. We want to spend more attention on data driven decision making. We'll talk a lot about that as we get downstream in some of these other slides. We want to do a better job of collaborating with our partners and coordinating with different bodies like council, like the planning commission and some others. We want to keep in mind that in some ways, and Lisa's team is going through this in part right now with policy and code alignment, we're updating the comprehensive plan. We're also updating the sign code. And over time, we'll be looking at various codes to bring into alignment that help us with better integration of this. And then we want to engage and be more transparent about all of this. And so those are the goals that we're going to keep in mind for all of these pieces of the process. The process is in the middle, right? This is what we're going to do in that annual cycle. We're, we're going to measure things, we're going to analyze them and we're going to perform. And we'll talk about each of those in the context of all of these goals. And I'll, I'll say before we move on, don't think of any of these as having like hard boundaries, right? All of these overlap. There's no, it only fits in one of these slices or it only fits in one of these boxes. They all touch one another, they all interplay with one another. This is just an illustration to kind of bring the point home of what we're going to be doing. And, and that's the, that's the, the universe that we're going to be doing this in. Evan, next slide, please. So first, the first phase of this is we're going to be doing measuring. Council member Kurtz, to answer that question that has been asked multiple times, you know, what is the number? Well, this measurement is going to get us there. And that's really, there, there are a couple of things that are major headliners here that we're talking about from a measurement perspective. One is a functional assessment and then two is ongoing needs. We can think about ongoing needs, what we used to call the unfunded projects. That, that's on, that's what ongoing needs is, and we develop that on an annual basis. But we're going to do it with all of those goals in mind. So to talk about the functional assessment part of this and why it's important and what it's going to look like and what it will yield to us. Ben Turner is going to come up and share some information with you about that. Ben?
Slide, Evan. All right. So I've got, I've got some more numbers here, but I did color code them. So they're a little easier to tell what's good and what's bad. So this, this is just a, a scale that I had put together. Mark and I had been talking about this for a few months. It basically just uses a 1 to 100 scale. You can see that we have a few of the, the category infrastructure types that Mark had listed earlier here. These are probably the five most, of, of the most value that the city has. They go kind of descending order by value. So the bad news is the, the red ones are the more expensive ones. But this, this goes into kind of basically three different types of just kind of categorizing our facilities, condition. We really have a little bit more information on condition just because we've already invested in asset management software with Asset Builder. I pulled some of this data from there. Some of it is just me kind of eyeballing what I can see. So we're, because we still have some assessment tools that are coming into play this year that are going to give us a more honed score specifically on streets. Parks will get a little bit from the parks master plan. Stormwater is going to get looked at when we're doing the streets. So those numbers will, will, will hone a little bit better, a little bit less of an eyeball test and more of an actual data driven approach. What we have been missing i- is more the configuration, the capacity. So configuration, for example, streets, we just did a new turn lane for Appleway. That would be, that'd be an example of a configuration change that would increase that score for streets. For facilities, we're sitting in a, in a really bad example of configuration in city hall here. This facility was not built to, to house the city hall, it was built for another purpose. So we've made our, made do configuration wise to make sure that the city, this facility meets the needs of the city hall needs. But it just doesn't meet a configuration and kind of how the spaces are, are both in size and how they're arranged to be an efficient facility. The, the numbers in parks and stormwater are mostly green. We don't have a lot of assessment tools, but for the most part, configuration and capacity, those are usually going to be high unless you're missing a service in the parks, like a dog park or a disc golf course, things like that. That would probably, if, if those were things that we really needed to have and, and made the decision that would lower our configuration score. Haven't done that yet, but that was just something I was thinking about as I was kind of going through. That's more services that are missing from those different types. And then capacity, really just size. We, we, when we talked earlier about the facility master plan, we've, we've identified a deficit in square footage for facilities for roads, it could be widening roads, adding lanes, things like that. And then for the other ones, it's really just, or those are just regular capacity issues. And then I had to make some educated guesses on the average ages of some of our types that will hone as we get through some of these more assessment tools will tell us. Because we just don't know when certain roads were built. We don't have those records available because they, most of them were built before the city existed. So that those, this, this will continue to get better as we go through assess that, go through that assessment cycle. The, the other things that, and like I said, the assessment tools that we're coming on this year, we've got the sidewalk scan coming this July, the street scan this July, the parks master plan, the stormwater plan has already given us some, some data that we can incorporate into this functional assessment. And then this can hone down if we go to the next slide, I believe. It, it breaks down into more streets infrastructure. So we haven't filled in the lane miles. We've calculated, we do have 54 lane miles in the city. We haven't broken those down by arterial collector. I can, I can find that data pretty quickly, but for the most part, it breaks us down into, into, and we could break down arterials versus collectors versus residential and score those the same way that you see here.
Fifty-four? That sounds really low.
That was the calculation that we just completed with the GIS folks with Street Logic.
Interesting.
So within six square miles, we have 54 lane miles. That does not include private streets. So like Legacy Ridge wasn't in the calculation, things like that. Those are just public streets at the city. All right, next slide, please. So this is just a chart that's okay. So on the left side, you can kind of see the same color codes that I showed you earlier. This is an overall streets infrastructure in 2026. It kind of shows, you know, how many, how much of the streets have a, of a failing grade of under 70. And then as you can, and you can see here, as, as we have assets, they degrade if you don't, it's just like owning a house. If you don't maintain the house, it gets kind of, kind of dingy after a while. Your driveway starts breaking down, the corners of your, you know, around your house, the paint starts chipping away as the kids run into them, things like that. Your water heater only has a lifespan of so long, your roof needs to get replaced every, you know, so many years, depending on what kind of roof you have. So no investment, you obviously degrade, 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 degrade. And we have, we have assets in the city that, that have done that over the years. It was even the maintenance was deferred or for whatever reason. And then on the left, on the right here, we've got the more strategic investment where you go in and tackle those failing facilities or, or, or infrastructure types. And you invest in it prudently and in the right places to maintain a higher level of facility condition, capacity and condition.
And so, and before we move off of this one, this, this type of analysis will also allow us on an annual basis to consider some of those tools that Kyle mentioned in part one, right? And this isn't to say one is better than the other. This is to say whatever is incorporated into the strategic investment side, you, you can see, and this is thus far, this is a hypothetical example based upon the eyeball test. We're going to confirm all of this with the actual data. But you see the strategic investment, regardless of the tool, helps to improve the, the functional assessment. So you're, you're, you're preserving and prolonging the life of the asset. Before we move on to the next one, Evan, if you would back up to the previous slide, I wanted to point out one other thing. This is where I was mentioning, each of these types that we talked about is going to have its own collection of attributes that you're measuring and coming up with scales to evaluate. There, there's level of service in there. There's all kinds of different attributes that each of these types is going to, to have uniquely attributed to it. And so as you're analyzing those and you're getting, you're using the data to help inform the decision, you're able to standardize and objectify the comparison. So if you're, you know, comparing a street to a tree, some would find there to be some difficulty in objectively comparing those things. This is designed to help do that on an, on a level playing field across time. And so that is part of the value of having these functional assessments per asset type so that we can make objective comparisons.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
The, the red lines on our streets here are not corresponding to the critical number.
No, sir. So that, that basically indicates all of our, I believe that's all our arterials.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear.
One, one thing that we will have, and we've just started kind of the software process with the street scan folks is they will give us a map that has those color codes based on what they found during the scan. They also were, were letting us know that as we go and fix a pothole and we plug that in, it will automatically change our score for that particular section.
Great.
So well, yeah, well, it'll, it'll look like that, but it'll have multiple colors and things like that. So we'll be able to see exactly where the red, red parts of the city are that we need to focus on.
Yeah. So where we're showing you aggregated estimates, we'll, we'll be able to break down each segment and, and show you its condition and essentially functional assessment by segment. And so that becomes extremely valuable when we talk about defining ongoing needs and then ultimately prioritizing things. Are there any other questions at this juncture before we move on to the next slide? All right. Evan, if we can go down to the next one, that one. So again, going back to the, and Ben hang out for a little bit, just in case some of this generates some questions. So, so going back to the higher level, the, the whole collection of infrastructure types. When we're looking at using other kinds of data to help make strategic investment decisions, one of the things, and this has been maybe a year ago, maybe a little longer than a year ago, we invested in something called our GIS urban. And so we upgraded our GIS capability. And so what we expect as a return for that is to be able to use that. And so for each of the types that we have here, we'll have this functional assessment, we can map it. We have all of these other data layers. We have zoning, we have development projects, we, we can put anything on there that we want to. And when you start stacking these things on top of one another and putting this need in place based on this assessment, you start seeing pinholes where you say, okay, that's where I need to invest. That's a problem that needs to be corrected immediately. And then you can prioritize in a much more effective way because you're using data from a 360 degree view from all perspectives to help to identify opportunities and to prioritize investments. You're maximizing the dollars that you do have and that gap becomes less consequential because you're getting more for each dollar. And so that's part of this strategy is to do it better, more effectively, more strategically. This is just an example of the layers that we would be using, but you get the point. You're laying them on top of each other and effectively seeing what shines through. And those are your opportunities to prioritize where you're spending your dollars. Lisa, is there anything that you'd like to add regarding the GIS piece of this or any of, any of this strategy? Ben, any, any comments you'd like to add here?
I mean, I think the only comment, this is really, we're, we're getting closer to the industry standard for how these things are done. I mean, most of the stuff you saw here, I used when I was in the Navy. This is how the federal government does their strategic facility investment. I mean, they got up in like mission with like airplanes and things, but that we don't have to worry about. But yeah, this, this is, this is getting very close to where the rest of the world does this kind of thing, in larger cities, things like that.
The process to get this incrementally with buyers and eventually probably some staff enhancement, like the GIS system really is, it's a powerful field for us to manage data. For us to be, to manage it up.
So I, I expect most of the functional assessment stuff, at least on my end, to finish up by the end of this calendar year. Uh, we do have the street scan scheduled for July, uh, takes literally, usually two to three months to analyze those millions of data points that they're going to be taking. Um, so unfortunately, we won't be able to use it as mu- as much for this next CFP. Um, but it will, it'll, it'll reap massive benefits in the future.
All right. And so that's, um, so we have all of that data. We have all of our team has access to that. We're using it. So we're using that then on an, on an annual basis to build, um, our ongoing needs assessment, which essentially is the annual. Uh, process whereby department heads are using this data to define, uh, capital needs, uh, that they're submitting. As part of the budget process. So from that, going back to the measure slice, right? We're talking about this functional assessment. Using the functional assessment to inform the ongoing needs, which are submitted on an annual basis. Okay. So they're submitted, they're sitting there, they're on a list, we're looking at it, what happens next? Uh, Evan, if you can go to the next slide. So we move from the measure slice to the analyze slice. And in this. Phase of the process, we're validating, um, and prioritizing, again, keeping all of these goals in mind. We're doing all of this all the time. Um. And so, um, you know, here's where we have this, uh, strategic investment analysis. If you want to look at it, that's what we were originally calling this workshop. That's really more appropriate to say at this stage of the game, we're producing a strategic investment analysis. Using the validation and prioritization steps here, right? Um, so how is this happening and when is it happening? Um, Evan, if you can go to the next slide. So. Here is how we're proposing for that to occur. Um, and the, this also addresses the who. Um, and this also, uh, is where we're going to ask council to take action, uh, to create something. Um, and so at this stage, uh, we're proposing that there's a steering committee that does this validation and prioritization. Um, we've already created what we're calling the capital program office. That's. Internal to the city. That's made up of all of our departments. We meet and have been meeting monthly to, uh, kind of manage the capital program. We're proposing that the council create an advisory board to go along with us in parallel. Uh, in this exercise, which would consist of members from the planning commission, the parks and arts, library board, community engagement commission, and then an at-large appointment. Um, and so we would work in conjunction, uh, to validate. The data and the ongoing needs assessment, the requests. Um, and then prioritize the proposed investments on an annual basis. Um, and so, uh, Evan, if you can go to the next slide.
Excuse me, is the idea is to have one representative from each of those departments?
So we, yeah, we would recommend, uh, that they would not be named individuals, um. Because as the pop, as the membership of those boards changed, they could make the decision of who would. Sit on the advisory board by some action of that board, but it would be a representative from each of those commissions and then an at-large representative from somewhere else in the community.
Okay.
And so the, the, I'm, I'm calling this the new annual cycle, um, because again, remember the cadence of all of this is the annual budget development cycle. So. We, to make this more meaningful, Evan, go to the next slide and then we're going to backtrack. The old or the current cycle is that in October, departments submit needs. And in November and December, the budget development process happens. Um, and the staff brings that to the city council. We have a workshop, we have a public hearing and we have two ordinance reviews. Um, and then the budget is adopted. And that's not to say that there isn't conversation and dialogue as that's happening, but it starts in October. Uh, if you back up Evan, what we're proposing is much, uh, many more touch points. Many more opportunities for, remember those goals for collaboration and coordination among much, uh, larger group of people. So we would start planning and engagement in the first quarter. Uh, and that's primarily that group I mentioned, uh, those two groups I mentioned, the. Uh, capital project office and the advisory board, we're doing that in coordination with one another. April and May is when we update those assessments. Assuming that they're annual updates, if not, it would be whenever they are. Um, June, July is when we're submitting the needs. And then August and September, again, the CPO and the advisory board are validating prioritizing. And then budget development happens in October, November. Now, that doesn't mean that council never hears about this across that timeline until October, November. It just means these are the primary players. Uh, the, the plan would be to keep you informed along the way. So that you know what's happening and we'll talk more about that in just a minute, um, so that you can see what some of the. Um, information that you'll be getting throughout the year is going to look like. Um, Evan, if you can go to the next slide, please, actually go beyond that. So the, these groups are meeting, they're doing stuff, they're analyzing all this data, they're looking at needs that people are submitting. They're looking at available funding. Um, and they're coming up with a prioritized recommended capital program. Um, this is an example, this may or may not be what it actually looks like. Um, but this is a hypothetical example where you're assessing all of these things and you're coming up with a prioritized list. That would be submitted to council during budget development. Uh, that would include the capital cost and then the lifecycle cost. So you would know, uh, what. The expected cost over the remaining life of that asset is going to be. Cause that's an important part that ends up dropping down to the operating budget on an annual basis. So you have a capital cost and then you have an ongoing operating cost for every one of these assets. Some are greater than others, but they all have them and we need to make sure that we're, uh, incorporating them into the discussion. And so that would be the proposed way to bring the capital facilities plan, uh, to the council on an annual basis, having gone through this process. Um, before we move on. Any questions about this phase?
Questions or comments?
Either or. This is, I, I want this to be a dialogue. I know this is a lot of information, but.
So I, I do have, I guess, one, uh, it's not so much a question, but more of a con, a comment on this. So if, can we go back two slides, I think it is? Uh, maybe one more? Yeah. So on this, on this list, uh, I guess I have two questions. One, um. You know, if I'm a member of the planning commission or the community engagement commission or the parks and arts commission. You know, I'm not necessarily looking, um, at what the city has available. I'm as a member of that commission or a member of that board, I'm trying to advance. Different projects and different proposals and different ideas as much as I possibly can. So I guess my question is twofold. One, how do we? Uh, prevent it from becoming an issue where, you know, the, the. Planning commission is trying to put forward a bunch of things without necessarily regard. To the library commission, without necessarily regard to the community engagement commission. Um, I guess that's my, my first, uh, comment. And then my second comment is, and you mentioned, um, Mark, that they would be looking at available funding. So if they're looking at available funding, are they just doing it within the parameters of what's available? Or are they doing it within the parameters of here's what we'd like to see? And I'll give you an example, you know, the, the parks and arts commission, um. Has come to us with different ideas and different proposals. And actually, this council. Voted to increase the amount we were putting in parks and arts to fund all these different things. So is this going to be a scenario where whoever this person is that represents the parks and arts commission? Comes to the steering committee and says, hey, we've got these five or six priorities. That we want to put on this list for next year and it's going to cost, you know, five hundred thousand to do that. And then it's advanced from there. Do you understand what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, I, I, to answer the first part of the question, uh, what, what would help control that or manage that, uh, would be. The ordinance establishing the board. Um, it would have a purpose, uh, it would have rules. Um, and the planning commission member would not necessarily be representing the interest of the planning commission. On the advisory board. Um, it, it, the, these folks are already engaged, they're already plugged into capital con- conversations.
Right.
And so gleaning that knowledge and experience seems to make a lot of sense. Um, but the, but the, the mission, the reason that that. Board would be commissioned would be the purpose that those people got together to meet, which would be to help prioritize, uh, capital needs. And so Evan, if you go to the validation and prioritization slide. You know, thi- this would be somewhat, and this is. I'm not trying to hedge, but, but it, it literally is true. It's whether, however you want to look at this, this is objectively subjective. Or subjectively objective, right? And so there's, there's, there's subjectivity that goes into this, but at the end of the day. Whatever the council says, and, and this is an example, right? So you would have, I don't know how many projects are on our current CFP, but it's something like eighty, right? So you would have eighty things on a list. And the council decides where the funding is, the, the cutoff, the number. So wherever that capital cost, the sum gets to that number, that's the cutoff, right? Um, and you're not going beyond that unless the council says, well, that project's important, I want to fund that. So the advisory board isn't making funding decisions.
Right.
It's making recommendations within available funding. And then the council is saying. We're going to accept that recommendation and set, keep the bar of funding there, or we're going to make some tweaks.
So I guess my question then is, on that timeline. When does that available funding mechanism? Uh, be, when is that put into place in the prior year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it ebbs and flows as decisions are made.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else before Mark goes on? Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, I just appreciate the participation from other groups in the establishment of priority and the review of the data. Uh, I think another set of eyes from a, a, I'd say at a, a broad set of the people who are already participating in our government. Um, support and validate that priority. So I think I recognize what, uh, the objective.
And, and before we move off of this, I, I just kind of flew over this. Evan, if you go back to the new cycle slide, I want to make sure that I highlight this. But we're, we're proposing engagement. Um, there hasn't been a lot of public engagement in this dialogue. There's been some. Uh, but we want, again, we want to make it deliberate. We want to make it meaningful and purposeful and, and use it to inform. Uh, the decision-making, um, and that's early on in the cycle as we have it programmed here. All right, uh, let's go to the perform slide, Evan. All right. So now the last, uh, phase of the, the process, now it's time to deliver, right? We want to perform and this is where accountability comes in. Um, and, and we want to be able to show that we're delivering, uh, on the plan, on the vision. And so this phase is the steps of delivering the projects and reporting about them. Um, and so Evan, if you go to the next slide, uh, we want to show you some things that are already in place. Number one, and number two, uh, that you will be seeing more about in the near future. Um, Ben, do you want to cover this one?
Sure. So this is our, this is our public portal, uh, basically for to let the public know what's going on with, uh, projects. We have this project up there that we've been working on design. Uh, since the beginning of the year, it's getting ready to start the summer. Linda, this is exactly what I sent you earlier today. Um, to include in your newsletter. Uh, we also had one up for Appleway, um, and we updated it. So this is, we, we update this, uh, as real time as we can get it. Uh, as things change around the project. So right now you can see some very fuzzy dates, which I can't read from here. Uh, but I, I recall that they are fuzzy because we don't have a contract awarded yet, uh, but when that gets awarded sometime, uh, towards the end of next month. Or a little bit after that, uh, we'll be able to fill in some of those dates and keep the public informed. So any of the big capital projects, uh, that the city is executing via contract. Uh, the intent is to keep this, uh, on the public portal so that, uh, folks can take a look at this. I will also link these projects on my monthly reports, uh, just in case you want to check on. Check them out on a monthly basis.
And so, uh, as Ben mentioned, this is up there now, uh, to point out on the bottom right, although if you were looking at this online, it would not be in that place, but because of space on the slide, we had to kind of shift it over. There's a public comments forum on each of these project pages. So it allows people in the community to tell us, hey. Why, why is the schedule the schedule? Are you going to consider this? Why not extend it down to the next intersection? So that, that, those kinds of questions are able to be asked and responded to, um, in, in the portal. Now, that doesn't mean. That we aren't going to do additional, uh, engagement. Um, for this particular project, we had a community meeting, we invited folks. Particularly along this route, but anybody from the public to come down and learn more about the scope, the schedule and the budget. So they could find out how it would impact them directly, their travel route potentially, access to their business. Um, we had a handful of folks turn out, we were pleased with the turnout. But we would propose to have a similar kind of event for major infrastructure projects going forward. It's all about being transparent. Uh, and engaging the public so that they know what's going on and are able to, uh, re- relate to how investment is being made. And what that return on investment is. Any other comments on this one, Ben?
Uh, no.
All right, Evan, go to the next slide if you don't mind. And so this is an excerpt from a report. Um, if you all will think back, um, to when the previous, uh, city engineer. Was here, we were doing at least quarterly project updates. Um, so our proposal is to resume, uh, that practice. Uh, we want to develop a report that covers all of these projects. We want to talk about scope, schedule, budget, strategy. Um, and Ben has put this together and plans to deliver it for the first time soon. And talk about it at the April first council meeting. Any other comments you want to make about this and?
No, I don't think so. So we've got a slide specifically loo- looks very similar to this for any of the projects from the, from the recent CFP that's in progress. So there's some. There's some, uh, kind of summary information at the beginning of the report, and then I provide a slide, uh, for each project. So you kind of see where they're at and, uh, where we're headed.
So as projects are being delivered, right? We didn't talk a lot about delivery here, but the, that CPO, that capital program office. Um, and, and we have a project manager. In fact, we have a new. If we reclassify engineering tech, is that what we're calling?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So he's an engineering tech. Uh, we, that, I think we hired Anthony before we had Luke Michaels, our city engineer. So they're kind of working in tandem. Uh, I also participate in that effort as well.
So on a delivery side, we've got active, you know, project management oversight, all of those things happening and at that CPO. Uh, discussion that's happening monthly, all of that is being managed within that group. These are examples of reports that are not only intended to engage the public, but also to keep council and the public informed. About delivery of, of those projects, but the management of the delivery is happening at a staff level, uh, by. Public works director, city engineer, community development director, project manager. Um, and so you see the results here and can ask questions about, hey, you said May, it's already June. What's up with this, right? That's the accountability piece that we want to keep preserved and fresh and moving. So, um. Before we move on, there's a few more cleanup things. Any questions about the delivery side? All right, Evan. This is just a, next slide, please. This is just a reminder, you've seen this before. We've talked tonight about the public investment side to help implement the comprehensive plan. Um, really all of this is funneled down, uh, to kind of the, um, what's, what's the punchline, right? Evan, if you go to the next slide. We're, we really want to get to the outcome. For public investment to be meaningful, it has to, it must, it's required to yield public value. Otherwise, why do it, right? That's what we're pointing and aiming at is, um. Improving the community. Um, by yielding public value. And that can be defined in a lot of different ways. If you look at our strategic plan. It's defined in these ways, quality of life, public safety, economic development, mobility and all of these other things. And those definitions could change over time as council adopts the new comprehensive plan and the new strategic plans. But that's what we always want to keep in focus, that the dollars we're investing yield public value. And so that's really what. This procedural change, this management change is designed to do regardless of how much money we have to spend. Or how many projects we're delivering. We want to do it better. And more effectively and more strategically. And so with that, the next slide shows next steps. And so we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. Um, we are asking for some direction. Um, we've proposed creating this advisory board. Um, we would propose creating it like any of the other commissions and boards by ordinance. Um, and if council agrees, we will put together a draft ordinance to bring back for future consideration. And we're also uh, saying that we probably need to have more discussions like this. Obviously, we would not have the same discussion again. Um, but as we get uh, down the road with decision making, these kinds of workshops, uh, I think are valuable, at least at um, certain increments, not, you know, not more than a couple of times a year necessarily. Um, but it helps to keep things level set, I believe. Um, and I hope you have gotten value out of this. I hope it spurred some questions that maybe brought back at a later time. Uh, spurred some thoughts about how we have been doing things and giving you kind of optimism, excitement. Staff calls it fun. I'm the only one that calls it fun. But we, we, we want to, we want to do a good job for the community. We want to deliver value for the community, and that's what this is all about. So we hope that we've communicated that. And with that, uh, we will stand for any questions or comments or or dialogue.
Got a question. Could you go over again on the capital investment advisory board? How much can be formed? If I got it correctly, it would be like one individual assigned from each of the committees now that would be on that?
So what, what we're proposing, and again, we'll, we'll bring back, uh, if if council chooses to go that route, we'll bring back some language that we can further discuss. The proposal that we would make, staff would make is that the makeup of the advisory board is, is five members. One member from the Planning Commission, one member from Parks and Arts, one member from the Library Board, one member from Community Engagement, and then an at-large member appointed by the mayor from the community. Uh, that would sit on that board to make a fifth member. It, an example of a pool of candidates that may fill that at-large slot. There's a group meeting that is actively discussing pedestrian walkability, bicycle safety, that may be a good person to tap, or a person from that group may be a good one to tap. There could be all kinds of people with an interest in wanting to put uh, their fingerprints on how the city makes these kinds of capital investments. Um, but that would be our recommendation, those five individuals.
So you had mentioned that there would be a representative from one of those. And because that changes, they may be on that committee, they may not. If that would change in itself, who's available? Would they, the recommendation come for this advisory board? Would that come from the individual, like Parks and Art Committee or something like that?
That would be our recommendation, yes, is that the board itself would appoint whoever that member was going to be.
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, so the, I'm enthusiastic actually regarding the opportunity here, the objective. Um, I always think that the actions we take are built truly on, on people. And I'll call it the energy, the motivation, the ambition, and the actions taken by people. And knowing our commissions, you know, all people are volunteers. Do you think that we have people who can engage to the level to make it successful? And I'm not that familiar with all of our participants in these commissions, so.
That's a great question. And uh, to help provide some additional context, we're, we're not proposing that we have an additional monthly meeting. This group would meet maximum four times a year. And, you know, we're talking about primarily in that it, um, that validation and prioritization period. So we're not talking about a fully fledged, once a month schedule with the potential for extra meetings. We're talking about a limited number that we would define in the ordinance.
Yeah. Uh, just as a follow-up, Mark, I believe confidently that there would be some important and useful exchanges between membership of the Planning Commission and the Library Board. Or between the Parks and Arts Commission and the Community Engagement Commission. The interactions that would be taken in the moment, I think, would be great, of great value, so.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
So, okay, so there was the advisory board you spoke about, and then the Capital Program Office. Is that, I mean, can you go back to that slide?
Sure, Evan, if you can backtrack to that. Uh, there you go.
So that would be made up of staff?
The Capital Program Office, which has, is already been created, we've already been meeting for close to a year to manage the capital program, is made up of staff members largely from, I mean, this, this is every department in the city. So we have at least one representative from each of our operating departments.
Okay.
So a couple of um, uh, comments and and then one question, and I think you answered it um, with Mike's question. So the, the, the commissions or the boards would appoint their own member to be on this, or how would that work?
Yes, I mean, whatever appointment looks like, yes, they would make the decision of which of their representatives would be on the advisory board.
Okay. And then, uh, just second comment, you know, SRTC does something very similar to this, where they have the uh, different folks from the community that serve on a, on a, uh, an advisory board for the, for the sole purpose of coming up with the um, the, the list, the prioritization list of what should and should not be funded. Um, I, and then the third comment I was going to make is, Evan, can we go back? I think it was like the second slide. That has just the list of the different funding uh, gaps that we had. Uh, one more back. Yeah, this one. I, I think it's worth pointing out, you know, the number that we saw in our um, handout tonight uh, in terms of the gap was thirteen point four eight two million. Obviously, if you do the quick math on how much we bring in in the streets fund uh, each and every year, and then plus that, or excuse me, minus that from the seventeen point five, we're looking at about thirteen and a half million dollars. So uh, it seems to me that the biggest part of our um, gap, um, i- is made up of roadway projects. Is that accurate?
Uh, well, certainly the large.
I mean, obviously, it's the largest one, right?
And, and, you know, in, in our community, like I mentioned before, we, and and you all know better than I do, we, we don't have water, wastewater, infrastructure. Those are huge dollar items. We don't have those. And so our most valuable asset in aggregate are, are roadways, for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, and uh, just to uh, dovetail up what Councilmember Dunn said, um, and it doesn't sound like that's, that it's going to add a lot of additional time. And I'm, I'm wondering whether there would be a, a consideration to making that advisory. Uh, I think it was called the Advisory Board, the, the top half of that, that committee, uh, making them all at large rather than pulling them from commissions.
That, that's an option that we could consider. Um, and and talking about that amongst staff as we were putting together uh, the recommendation. You know, you, we could certainly, I, I believe we could certainly fi- find five at-large folks that may be interested in serving in a capacity like this. I think what, what we ended up landing on in this configuration was just the institutional knowledge that the work that these boards are already doing would bring to that process. Um, and in addition, they're interested in serving and, and, and they would be continuing. It wouldn't be a new capacity, it would be kind of in parallel to their existing capacity. But either way, um, I think the, the mission or the purpose is to bring um, non-city staff into that analysis prioritization process.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Um, I'm supportive of the advisory board idea. Kind of along Councilmember Spencer's um, question. Um, and just something for you guys to think about with whatever you look at bringing forward to us. Even including past board members. So there's people in the Planning Commission that maybe um, rotated off. So maybe those are the people we look at for at-large, or if they can't be filled um, by immediate and current planning or community engagement people. But they know um, how things work, and um, they might be people who are still wanting to serve, but maybe um, couldn't commit to the, you know, once a month, but four times a year, and they know how things work.
That's a great, great suggestion, yeah.
Need to have graduated the City Academy or something along those lines, right?
I also like this, the concept of having individuals who are not on these existing ones, as somebody new. And I certainly like Councilman Curse's idea, is even approaching individuals who have been on these committees and are no longer there. But the idea of meeting once a quarter is good, good. I was concerned it was going to be monthly. And how much redundancy do we get there being effective? But I can certainly see the quarterly thing. I'm very in favor of that. Uh, but I really would lean towards having individuals who are, aren't on those committees, but yet they do have some experience there. I know when we were looking at putting the time in to get a Community Engagement Commission, one of the concerns was, are we going to be able to find nine or ten people who are not already involved in other committees beyond there to keep that fresh look? And we've been able to be very successful with that. So that's why I was questioning a little bit that we're just recycling some of our same people into a new organization. Is it really going to be effective? But once again, I like the idea of quarterly, and I like the idea of approaching individuals who not been on the committee or have been on previous committees.
I'm sure there'll be more discussion on that when the time comes. Any more, yes, go ahead.
I actually, um, I'm going to take the exact opposite approach. I, um, I, it's not that I don't want more uh, at-large folks. I, I do. And in fact, you know, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to increasing the number of at-large. But I do think there is value to having someone from the different commissions. Because as, as you say, Mark, I mean, they know, you know, be back to the uh, kind of the point I was trying to make earlier about the i- if you're a member of the Planning Commission, you know about the projects the Planning Commission is looking at. If you're a member of the Library Board, you know about the Library Board projects that they're looking at. So I think there is value in having those folks participate. And, you know, to me, I, I don't want to necessarily just create another board or another advisory board just for the sake of creating more boards. Um, I, I do think there, there would be, I think there's something to be said for having people from these different commissions be part of it in, in some form or another. Maybe that means it's, you know, the four, and then you have three out-larges. You know, or, or maybe it's a rotating thing where, you know, we've got a couple from each of the commissions or, or boards each year, but I do think there is value in that.
I think one thing before I jump to Councilmember Curse, we need to consider the, the timeframe that would get somebody brand new who doesn't know, who doesn't know the process on board. And that, that lead time to hitting the ground, they wouldn't be able to hit the ground running, whereas I think a lot of, yeah, any current commission member would be able to do that. Councilmember Curse, then Councilmember Van Orman.
And just to go along with what Mayor Protem said, I, I wasn't really clear on what I was saying, I guess. The, I think the, like, the number one preference would be someone who's currently on um, one of these boards or commissions. And then perhaps if you can't fill, um, or for the at-large, someone who has some experience. So the preference would be someone who is currently knows what's happening. Um, but if we're having trouble filling that with somebody who's current, maybe somebody who is past, like emeritus of the commissions. And then um, at-large, I, I think that there's probably a good selection of people in the community who might be able to fill more than one at-large position, just like Mayor Protem was saying.
Go ahead, Councilmember Van Orman.
Just thinking about how as a county, you have the steering committee of elected officials. Basically, they're representing each and every one of the corner of the county. The same thing with the commission members. Um, like the idea, I like the idea of having talent. They know exactly what's happening within the city, and that way we can kind of hone in on these capital facilities.
Good points across board. Councilmember Spencer.
So a couple of things. I know you mentioned the subjectivity and objectivity of this process, right?
I've already marked that phrase.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh, because as, as Ben was making the presentation, uh, you know, just look, a lot of that stuff is going to be pretty objective, right? You're, you're going to plug in all the data and you're going to see, well, this road is really failing and this road is okay, right? Um, and so I, I'm just curious how in-depth this group is going to have to get. And, and also, as, as we've been speaking, um, and, and as Councilmember Van Orman mentioned, um, I think if it's only going to be four meetings a year and it's not going to be that in-depth, perhaps it's just the council as that, as an advisory board.
That, that's certainly an option. Um, I think in the decision about the recommended membership, one, one of the advantages that this makeup gives us is that, to the, to the mayor's point, you wouldn't have kind of this training period or, or acclimation period. All of these folks would be able to hit the ground running. But there's no doubt that the folks that are working on the capital uh, program would be helping to guide that, right? That, so they wouldn't, the advisory board would not be expected to come up with these uh, methodologies that we, staff would be working on those and bringing those, and then we would be working to refine them and uh, work out the bugs and making sure that all of those members of that entire steering committee were comfortable with the results, so that they would be confident in the recommendation. But, but that certainly is an option if council so chose.
The struggle I'm having with this, I take my marching orders from you and your staff as the experts, because you guys are hired to do that. I am not. So I have to rely on that. I feel that I'm getting that from you guys now. So although I think the committee would have some advantages, are we just putting something else in there to now have a committee of individuals to reiterate what you're telling us? And it's not necessarily you. That'd be my question.
So I, I would, I would say no. And the reason I would say that is because the, the process um, of validating and prioritizing would be done at the steering committee level, and so it would be informed by both of those pieces simultaneously, working together, collaborating. But part of the reason why um, we have those individual board members, not the individuals, but the positions identified as such, is because part of this is we want them to help promote public engagement, which hasn't been part of the process at all. Um, and, and that's really the piece that we want to bring into the mix um, to evaluate. And, and again, going back to the validation and prioritization. I don't think so. Uh, but obviously, that would be something that we would have to keep in mind and make sure that we weren't just, for example, rubber stamping something.
Well, this isn't something that's going to be decided tonight. It'll come up at a, a future meeting. So I think there's lots more discussion that'll be had.
Can I ask one more question?
Okay.
Just real quick, Mark. So what would the scenario be? And hopefully, I, I don't ne- necessarily anticipate this happening. But, you know, let's say the advisory board comes out and says, you know, we think our number one priority should be a dog park. But then the Capital Program Office comes out and says, we've got streets that are falling apart. Our number one priority needs to be such and such a street. How did the, how does that come together? I mean, is, do, does the steering committee then just compromise on what should be number one and number two and number three? Or is more weight given to the advisory board or to the city staff or? Can you walk us through that?
Yeah, great question. Um, Evan, if you can back up, or I maybe go forward to that validation and prioritization slide. And again, this isn't a final product, but part of that would be similar to the way that we evaluate proposals of, of some kind, right? You have weights in different uh, places. And, and again, the, the methodology behind that is to, is to try to standardize the final ranking. So that it, it is as objective as possible, understanding that throughout that line, there's some subjectivity. Um, especially if people are evaluating and scoring something. And so the, the idea would be that all of that stuff would be happening in the steering committee, not in the advisory board and in the CPO, and then we compare them. Uh, it would be happening at the committee level, and then you would have, if, if there was a dispute, it would have to be mediated in some way just as it's done at this dais or any other board or commission meeting right now. There would have to be some way to gain a final answer.
Right.
And that would be procedural.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of thinking back to the um, how the Planning Commission does things. You know, the Planning Commission will vote on whether a project meets their approval and whether they recommend it to the council. So I, I was just wanting to express that out loud and see what your thoughts were on it.
And, and, and most of this work, just to follow up on that thought, most of this work is going to, again, we're validating the process that was used to assess each type of we're validating the process that was used to assess each type of infrastructure. And we're validating the ongoing needs assessment that is submitted during the budget development process. And then we're combining those things and then we're prioritizing. We're not necessarily at the committee level going out and creating, um, you know, new project needs. Uh, or, or something like that, right? You're, it, it essentially is validating information that's been collected and compiled. And then agreeing on the prioritization through using an objective method to rank and score. And, and of course, at some point, there's going to be on the margin, a dispute that's going to have to be addressed.
All right. No other questions? Is that, is that it?
In terms of our presentation, yes, it sounds like if I can summarize
Sure.
that there's some consensus about the advisory board. We need, we maybe need to have more discussion about the membership and the makeup. And, and we can have that discussion. We'll bring back, uh, proposed language at some future council meeting unless you have that discussion again, uh, at that time. Um, and then we'll talk about in the, uh, review of the workshop schedule at some future point, another workshop to come back and revisit. Sound good? All right.
Just to check, make sure I'm not missing anything on the agenda. Nope, it says adjournment. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
We, we missed the financial quiz.